First order of business tonight is to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Their motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
All. So carry. Recommend approval of the minutes of May 18th regular meeting. Everybody have a chance to go through them, corrections, deletions.
Motion to approve. And what's on?
All the motions are second, all in favor.
Second.
Their motion is second, all in favor.
All.
So carry. To review the account balances, distribution ledgers and financial statements for the general water sewer funds as of May 31st, 2021.
Motion table.
I'll second.
Their motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
All. So carry. Recommend approval of resolution.
You missed the claim.
What was that?
The list of claims, the bills?
Oh, I'm sorry. Review the list of claims for May 2021.
I just have one question. Cooch County Highway Department, 6565, smoke removed?
Correct.
That is correct.
Do we just pay them all year long and then?
I don't think they bill it.
Oh, really?
Is that correct, Cheryl?
Right. We just got to go for the winner, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, come on.
Any other questions about the list of claims? Get a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Their motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
All. So carry. Recommend approval of resolution 2021-05, authorize the city administrators to file application to Minnesota Management and Budget Office for the purpose of the new safe harbor transit dock.
Can we get an explanation of exactly that? That is, people understand what that is?
What was that, Jen?
Can we get like an explanation of what exactly that means and what that is? Is this a project or a big deal?
Cheryl, can you speak up for that?
Yes, it's similar to what we did, Jennifer, in 2019, to make a capital bonding request to the state for them to add this project into their bonding bill. Rob Monday will explain it better than me, but...
So when the city, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, sure.
So when the city puts in requests for a bonding proposal, they have to put in the application to manage their budgets, so they put out to the builder's spreadsheet, and then I get the bill draft, and the bill already wrapped, and I believe I put it in this year already, so $2.1 million, I got it right?
Yeah.
For the bonding request, so. I heard that was on the agenda tonight, so that's why I came along, because you wanted to explain it.
So this is money fronted in anticipation of grants for the project? If you could explain?
That's correct. Every other year, the state bonds for all the worst ground, this is for the city, this would be a lot of worst ground. Another example is last money, you know, we have the old house for the metro, it's in that money, you know? Communities where there's county municipalities, has a representative to put in a bonding request, and then as long as it's not like, you know, like they did now, where the city administration asked for, give approval for it to be in the management budget, so as long as there is not the enough, I put in the request at the city office's asking.
Based on the request for what they think are current projects for the safe harbor transit dock is going to be?
Yes.
And if that's approved, that's just dispensed over the year 2022, or how does that work?
I believe once it's approved, you have, the municipality has, I think it's three years to get the project completed after it happens to be approved, and there are extension given if there's, if it's in the process, or if you run into negative circumstances, like you're, you know, engaged, use these bond, or, you know, a lot of money costing this whole thing about this. It's three years after the bill's passed, so you have to assume.
So that that money that is potentially awarded by the state, if for some reason the project changes in scope, what does that mean for the funds that were given, or are they guaranteed regardless, or do they come with certain types of stipulations?
I have to be back to you on that. I know there are project changes that happen, and I can't recall right now what the processes for, for going back to state explaining changes.
Currently, the ask right here is just so that we file the application for the, to get on the budget.
I'm just trying to ask questions to make sure that there's no loopholes that get left behind, so that when this project does come up, we are able to suggest changes to the project that are more corporate to the community, and we aren't told that we're not allowed to do that because the funding that was given prevents that from happening. That's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. So.
Is there any hearings? Well, I mean, I know that the project was a lot opposition for her, for, I don't know, a question for Bob, can I ask Bob a question? Do you do all the research? About this?
John, we've been through this, we've got, there's been plenty of email correspondence, I've tried, I've done everything I can to keep them quiet, all the, find out all the things, and that sort of, my job, and see if it's, it was my creativity.
So, what is that, for the process? Part of that process, not perfect?
Well, that's, that's not the answer.
Okay, so, next question?
Yes, I'll recommend a question. What was the question?
My question is, ours, you know, I live very close to John's superdome, and they were told there would be a dock, it would be 20 foot loss.
This is in regards to the pier? It's for the pier project?
It's for your project, your project.
But I just want to be sure.
Yeah.
Do they understand the things?
Understood, Karen. Understood.
As long as that's, so there's a request that's been approved for $765,000, is that correct?
I took one just now.
And then there's another request for $765,000 that hasn't yet been approved by the state, and this for $2.1 million, this for 2022, is that correct?
That's what I said, $765,000.
Yeah, I feel like the previous request in 2019, since the bonding bill didn't pass, that just kind of went away. It's not, that won't ever come back, right? I mean, that didn't ever pass. The engineers recommended, since, the engineers recommend that you apply for both avenues, and, you know, maybe you don't, maybe you don't get one, or maybe you don't get the other, and that's just the way you try to fund projects, is what's been explained to me.
So this isn't a request through the LCCF?
No, this is, this is an application to get on the bonding bill of the state.
Through the state?
On the taxpayers' money for the state.
The law.
Whatever it is, that's what the application, that's what the resolution is for, to get in on this of the bonding projects that the state, and there's probably, Rob maybe answered, there's probably 10 projects to one that don't get approved, so it's just an application of one of, how many, 1,000, 10,000?
No, I don't know, anybody know the number? Last, Mr. Mayor, last, last bonding bill, there was a request for $6.3 billion to request to be every line for all 200,000, so, well, a third request saved that one, so.
What's the expiration date for the applicant, or what's the application date? Like when the last day is submitted?
June 19.
Okay, I didn't know, I knew it was, it was.
June 18, you said?
Yeah.
It's right on, it's right on. Okay, the...
Can we tag that till next week?
No. We can make a recommendation, but this is just a recommendation, we approve it after next week, so maybe you'll get it, but this is just a recommendation now. That's why we don't have minutes of tonight's meeting, it's just because these are the recommendations at the top, but we have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is it second? I'll second. Their motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
All. So carry. The next action is the liquor store's statement. Jen?
Did you guys get 19 too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I feel like we can't really look at 20 because...
No.
Yeah, that was exciting to see, having to social distance and people still having to wear a mask, it was nice to see the difference between 19 and 21.
Well, it looks like you had another real good month, Jim. Business seems to be getting better and better, or?
Yeah, I think it was kind of a big excitement towards the end of May when the restrictions were lifted, we had three very busy weekends in a row, and now I feel like we're kind of just getting into the summer, you know, business here, so. We'll get the tent up here soon and get some more outdoor seating and make more room.
Do they have an ETA on the tents, the new tent?
Like, anywhere, I think the week of June 15th, I believe, so.
For the audience's, this information, what we did here is we got this month's statement which shows about an $81, $150, $45 profit. Last year was COVID, so it was really hard to compare along there, and obviously last year we lost $2,000, $2,100 this month, but compared to 2019, we're about $3,000, $3,000 ahead of 2019, which people consider as a normal year, so we're exceeding that by $3,000 on this level, 50% more profit, so I think that's good job. Any things planned until coming up?
Yes, June 19th, we'll do our annual cornhole tournament, that's set, so if you want to play?
What's the tournament?
Cornhole, like bean bags, you know? The sign up sheet is posted in the muni, you could do singles or doubles, and there'll be prizes to give away. And then July 17th, we are going to do the third annual, or pick off, so.
How old are you in the?
That's for August 14th, I believe, so, and I've been trying to correspond with people to get things going for that.
Have you seen an increase in the off sale?
Yes.
Good bit.
I don't know if it's because we brought our new products, or we're, you know, getting some better sales now, I don't know, I've been working really hard the last year to try to get off sale up, so.
What do you have, any questions for Jen? Get them all to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Give a second?
Yeah.
We have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
All. So carry.
Thank you.
Let's see. The next is to form a committee to negotiate collective bargaining agreement with the local 99 workers expiring on 7/31/2021. Most volunteer for that. Wonder if they have a meeting, I guess I can do it. Well, I'd like to see Todd, Cheryl, and anybody, Jen, you want to be on it?
I can try, I worry about my work schedule, but I would, if I could attend, I would be involved, if members of me, you know, who works out.
All right. And right now, then, if the schedule works out, we'll, I'm sure we can set, if I remember right, that fellow, he showed up, he was, Cheryl, do you remember that? We negotiated with him before, I think you were there, Todd, he was pretty flexible, you know, he'd come in the evenings, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
So I think we can make that, so, yeah. So I'd like the former committee of Todd, Jen, and Cheryl to negotiate with the local 99 workers of the liquor store agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
All. So carry. Nick, public works report?
One of the biggest issues we've got, gas companies snag a water line.
What was that?
We had a gas company snag a water line behind Looney's.
Behind Looney's, okay. Was that in the alleyway then? Did they have to repair the alleyway, or?
No, it was off the road.
Off the side?
Yeah, in the roadway.
Okay. Did they put the block dirt and everything back?
Yep.
Okay. They fixed it up, I know that was, it's the same gas company that was working on the main street, too, wasn't it?
Yeah. We had one sewer lift station where they pulled one of our water lines to, never did break it, we just went.
Well, I see you're trying to get the ditch as well, now with this rain, but I keep with it, when it, the grass really grows in June, you know, you have one week and it all looks nice, and the next week, we can start going again, so, did we get that long more?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome, perfect.
Excellent.
Excellent, good. Well, it's all miles on it, this, watch the weather.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else for Nick? Any park issues, or? I'm trying to think of a few things, I can't think of anything right now myself.
I have just one question. Do you, do you have an idea of the timeframe, or would you think you might try to tackle that field deck project down by the park, what do they call that, Main Street Park?
Main Street Park?
Yeah.
Two weeks from now.
What was the question?
We're going to color wash the deck down, the little picnic area, down on Main Street Park, they call it down there by, is it Heiney's?
Yeah.
Next to Heiney's place? We're just going to spruce it up and color wash it and...
Do you have a picnic table for that?
Yeah, we'll have to get a picnic table, and then chain it and lock it.
I just received word tonight, now, they're anticipating blacktop on October 18th, there's been, of course, they're going to mill from the blacktop, from the railroad tracks to the downtown projects, so blacktop's around June 18th, and then right after that, you know, I know there's dust flying around and things like that, but there'll be some, some stuff, there'll be some cleanup, there's nothing that the city has to, but there'll be some other things, you want to wash things down, or do things like that, just giving everybody a date, so it should be complete, but I don't expect more than one or two days on the blacktop, and after that, it's, the job will be, you know, pretty much final belt, and tree planting and stuff, not tree planting, but some landscaping a little bit, but there you go, so.
Okay.
I know the residents will ask me, Mr. Joyce, Paul, I try to keep them, okay, I guess we, is there, is there anything more for Nick here?
Yeah, there's a request that they'd like to pick the table down on the city dock, right down by Looney's.
Yeah, I talked to the owner.
Got another one?
I talked to the owner this morning.
Okay.
We got a range.
Great. Jen's got a question, go ahead, Jen.
I was just talking about the city park area, that local building around there, it's called Stone Roof Place, probably nobody ever, because they haven't heard, the show was, show was, there was a double, local building around there, there's a blind spot there where the trees are hanging over there.
That cedar tree has to be trimmed, that cedar tree, there's a big corner that they pop.
You gotta slow, you gotta slow down.
Well, of course, you can't always slow down, but that's not the way you got to slow down. You drill trees, you can see what's coming around the corner.
Depends on, you're not free on it.
Yeah. I drove by today, you have to stop if you want to make a right around the corner, because the tree is so over there.
All right, Nick, I think you can take care of that over on the season now. Another question, I think it was a couple weeks ago, Joel Farmer, did you ever get rid of that tree at his place?
Yep.
Just made me think of what you said, a tree, so.
Yep.
Anything else for Nick? Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got a request from the Cooch County Historical Society to install an informational kiosk for Big Vic. I don't see anybody from the county here, but I think that, I would have a problem with that, I do get questions with that statue above and things like that, I'm sure that would all be detailed as part of the history of this area, so I would have no problem with this, Cooch County Historical Society wants to install a kiosk.
Well, I talked to Ashley last night, and I asked her about this concept, and it's not going to cost great or anything, they're getting the backer, or back whatever you want to call it, from the same company that makes the one for counties put on already, and so it looked like it, and she said that you have so many people come in and want to know about what's the story of Big Vic and Big Louis, and the people where Big Louis is down south, they really don't have the story, they don't, all they know is a statue, and they got it, but the Cooch County Museum just thought that it would be a good idea, a history lesson for everybody to come by and be able to read the story of Big Vic and Big Louis, how they came about, what they represent, and I thought it was a good idea. I personally went down and I went to bike trail and read every one of those little informational things they have on, and what really amazed me was the one that they had here on the end of the street through the schoolyard, all the information on that backer, you could actually go there and read every one of those things, and get a complete history of the city right here, just by reading that, on that little, whatever you call that, cannon thing, which I thought, and they had pictures and everything, and I'm sure they're going to have pictures of Big Louis, Big Vic, or Big, Big Louis. But I just, I just thought that could be a good idea.
Would we be able to review what the presentation would be before they?
Oh, yeah, well, if she was here, we could ask her, but, yeah, I'm sure. Was that correct, hearing is going to be similar to one of the kiosks? Right, it's going to be just like the ones a long time ago. They wanted to keep something, everything all into them, so instead of going to the county, Ashley called in, and they could upgrade this price board, so she went, it would help me in doing this, and that's way cheaper. Well, I think it'd be interesting to read what they say about that, I've heard various stories about Big Vic, that sometimes maybe the facts could be interested to you. See that, I can elaborate on that, so, I guess I have no problem, I don't know, do we need a, Wolf, you seem to be up on top of this, or Cheryl, do you want to, first of all, recommendation that we go along with installing the kiosk for Big Vic and tell the Historical Society and such? I'll make a motion we do that. Give me a second.
Second.
Their motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Cheryl, I think, do you want to contact the Historical Society again?
Yeah, I'll be working with her on it, and she's going to contact Dick Davis, and, you know, and she's got lots of documentation of her own, already compiled, but she'll make sure she talks to Dick Davis, for sure, and people will be able to review the content before she gets it.
The next order of business, you maybe can fill us in on the information of the Voyager National Park to guarding fee changes, what fees are we talking about?
They're just talking about, they're increasing their fees for camp sites and houseboat sites and the boat tour, and they're just sending out to the council, you know, just to inform them that they're going to increase the prices.
So just some information.
Just information, yeah.
The next order of business, recommendation for the land use, planning commission approval of the conditional use permission for the public boat launch and parking lot, obviously we had a meeting here last Tuesday, I think it was, in zoning committee, asked the recommendation to approve the zoning for the land, for the boat landing. So with that recommendation, we could go ahead, I guess the question is, if we could go ahead, is there a recommendation to go ahead to continue the plans and to install a boat landing and parking lot?
We can make that recommendation, but under that recommendation, there are stipulations which has to be met, as far as the conditions.
And what are they, can you read?
Well, it must be dark sky, compliant, have signage on the alleys, no overnight parking lot, boat dock, home motorized vehicles on alleyway, trailways and signs for walker, driving condition, handicap parking, if the budget allows, a sidewalk will continue all the way down to the water, there will also be adequate buffer zone around the parking lot, and they want to know how intrusive the AIS washing machine is going to be.
These are actually conditions that will be recorded, so they need to be explicit, not, not questions, they need to be what the city's conditions are associated with the project, and these are the recommendations from the planning commission.
Okay, yeah, basically, they listed the concerns that the audience had, I was here listening to most of them, I think I've heard most of them, but, so some of those are, or not all of them are the concerns, the things that can be incorporated, I believe most of them, other than budget constraints, can be incorporated into the design, I believe, again, budget constraints can restrict, as you say, sidewalks or some portion of the construction, I guess, the way it's laid out, but I don't see an issue there, you know, from the concerns that I heard that night, it also is concerned that I didn't think there'd be much, much of a problem in the design stage, and were you here, Todd?
Yeah.
So if we approve this, then, then it's got to go back to Sullivan, and he's got to draw all the, the final plans, yeah?
Yeah.
Then...
So next, yeah, okay, that's, that's why we had that meeting the other night, just to see what the concerns are, and if they were too big, or if it still comes over budget, obviously, if this gets drawn up, the plans get drawn up, and exceeds our budget, that we can't afford it, I mean, we always have the right to reject the plans or reject the bids, but, you know, it don't appear to me, what was requested there, and the concerns that were listed by the audience, that there was any more, you know, unreasonable, or really costly, that, you know, costly, obviously, the length of the sidewalk, again, that's, that would be a funding issue, which we made a decision on.
I guess I have one more question, after the Sullivan, whoever writes up the final plans or whatever, then we have to have a public hearing to talk about the new plans, correct?
Yeah.
Once you get the plans drawn up, you can see, yes?
No, no, you just asked a question, the next step would be, is if you approve this, then you go ahead and you draw and find a set of plans with as many conditions as you can get in there, obviously, some of them are budget concerns, which you won't know until you get the bids, so you don't build those into the plans, you just wait and see how the knowledge come in, and then upon receiving the bids, you make a determination if you want to behave with the project then, so.
There are also, on this other little panel that they're conditioning...
There's a double pool of people that are all in hand there.
Yep.
There's a blind spot there where the trees are hanging over there.
That cedar tree has to be trimmed.
That cedar tree, it's gonna be more than a day.
It needs to be trimmed.
And they gotta slow down.
Well, of course, you can't always slow down, but that's not the way you got to slow down. You drill trees, you can see what's coming around the corner.
Depends on how many owners.
Yeah. I drove by today, you have to stop if you want to make a right around the corner, because the tree is so over there.
All right, Nick, I think you can take care of that over on the season now. Another question, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, Joel Farmer just said, did you ever get rid of that tree at his place?
Yep.
It's gone. Just made me think of what he said a tree, so.
Yep.
Anything else for Nick? Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
We've got a request from the Cooch County Historical Society to install an informational kiosk for Big Vic. I don't see anybody from the county here, but I think that would have been a problem with that. I do get questions with that statue of all these things like that. I'm sure that would all be detailed as part of the history of this area. So I have no problem with this Cooch County Historical Society wants to install a kiosk.
Well, I talked to Ashley last night, and I asked her about this concept. And it's not going to cost very near anything. They're getting the back whatever you want to call it from the same company that makes the one the county's put on already. And so it looked like it. And she said that you have so many people come in and want to know about what's the story of Big Vic and Big Louis. And the people where Big Louis is down south, they really don't have the story. They don't, all they know is a statue. And they got it. But the Cooch County Museum just thought that it would be a good idea, history lesson, for everybody to come by and be able to read the story of Big Vic and Big Louis, how they came about, what they represent. And I thought it was a good idea. I personally went down and I went to bike trail and read every one of those little informational things they have on. And what really amazed me was the one that they had here on the end of the street through the schoolyard. All the information on that back, you could actually go there and read every one of those things and get a complete history of the city around here just by reading that little, on that little, whatever you call that cannon thing, which I thought, and they had pictures and everything. And I'm sure they're going to have pictures of Big Vic, or Big... But I just thought that could be a good idea.
Would we be able to review what the presentation would be before they?
Oh, yeah, well, if she was here, we could ask her, but yeah, I'm sure.
Was that correct in hearing? It's going to be similar to one of the kiosks.
Right, it's going to be just like the ones along the line with it.
Yep.
They wanted to keep something, everything all into them. So instead of going to the county, Ashley called in and said, "I'll write this price board," so she went right to the company that are doing this. And that's way cheaper.
Well, I think it'd be interesting to read what they say about that. I've heard various stories about Big Vic that sometimes leave the facts to be interested in. See that? Elaborate on that. So I guess I have no problem. I don't know, do we need a... Wilbur, you seem to be up on top of this. Cheryl, do you want to... First of all, recommendation that we go along with installing the kiosk for Big Vic and tell the Historical Society and such? I'll make a motion to do that. In your second.
Second.
The motion is second in my favor.
Aye.
Cheryl, I think, do you want to contact the Historical Society again?
Yeah, I'll be working with her on it. And she's going to contact Dick Davis and, you know, and she's got lots of documentation of her own already compiled, but she'll make sure she talks to Dick Davis for sure. And we'll be able to review the content before she gets it.
My next order of business, you maybe can fill us in on the information of Voyager National Park to garden fee changes. What fees are we talking about?
They're just talking about they're increasing their fees for camp sites and houseboat sites and the boat tour. And they're just sending it out to the council, you know, just to inform them that they're going to increase the prices.
So just some information.
Just information, yeah.
The next order of business, recommendation for the land use, planning commission approval of the conditional use permission for the public boat launch and parking lot. Obviously, we had a meeting here last Tuesday, I think it was, in zoning committee, to pass the recommendation to approve the zoning for the land, for the boat landing. So with that recommendation, we could go ahead, I guess the question is, is there a recommendation to go ahead to continue the plans and to install a boat landing and parking?
Didn't make that recommendation, but under that recommendation, there are stipulations which has to be met as far as the conditions.
And what are they? Can you read them?
Uh, well, it must be dark sky and fine. Have signage on the alleys, no overnight parking lot, boat dock, home motorized vehicles on alleyway, trailways and signs for walker, driving condition, handicap parking. If the budget allows, a sidewalk will continue all the way down to the water. There are also adequate buffer zone around the parking lot, and they want to know how intrusive the AIS washing machine is going to be.
These are actually conditions that will be recorded, so they need to be explicit, not questions. They need to be what the city's conditions are associated with the project. And these are the recommendations from the planning commission.
Okay. Yeah, basically, they listed the concerns that the audience had. I was here listening to most of them, I think I've heard most of them. But so some of those are, or not all of them are, the concerns, the things that can be incorporated. I believe most of them, other than budget constraints, can be incorporated into the design, I believe. Again, budget constraints can restrict, as you say, sidewalks or some portion of the construction, I guess, the way it's laid out. But I don't see an issue there. You know, from the concerns that I heard that night, it also is concerned that I didn't think there'd be much of a problem in the design stage. Were you here, Tom?
Yeah. So if we approve this, then it's got to go back to Sullivan, and he's got to draw all the final plans, yeah, final plans, then?
The next step, okay. Yeah, that's why we had that meeting the other night, just to see what the concerns are, and if they were too big or still comes over budget. Obviously, if this gets drawn up, the plans get drawn up, and exceeds our budget, then we can't afford it. I mean, we always have the right to reject the plans or reject the bids. But, you know, it don't appear to me what was requested there in the concerns that were listed by the audience, that there was any more, you know, unreasonable or really costly fact, you know, costly, obviously, the length of the sidewalk. Again, that's, that would be a funding issue, which we made a decision on.
I guess I have one more question. After the Sullivan, whoever writes up the final plans or whatever, then we have to have a public hearing to talk about the new plans, correct?
Yeah.
Once you get the plans signed up, you can see the bids. No, no, you just asked a question. The next step would be is if you approve this, then you go ahead and you draw and find a set of plans with as many conditions as you can get in there. Obviously, some of them are budget concerns, which you won't know until you get the bids, so you don't build those into the plans. You just wait and see how the knowledge come in. And then upon receiving the bids, you make a determination if you want to behave with the project then.
There are also, on this other little panel that there, condition and interim use or prevents.
Can you speak up a little bit?
On this flyer that I have here, conditional use and interim, it must be from a zoning board, or the zoning ordinance, it's in regards to conditional use prevents. And it says if a proposed conditional use satisfies the conditional use standard set for it in the zoning ordinance, then generally, the land owner is entitled to the conditional use permit. Just thought I'd throw that in there also regarding the boat.
Okay, well, did you make the recommendation?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion and second to my favor.
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
So carry.
Excuse me, are you passing this, or are you passing it to the council next week that makes decisions? I can think that maybe they make decisions.
This is just a recommendation.
What is it?
This is a recommendation on, to accept the recommendation of the planning commission.
And then you don't have to come up with any particular budget money to spur all this stuff?
It goes back to Joe.
Yeah, it goes back to Joe, and then he's going to write out new plans with the budget, and if we have a budget, then we're out of the game.
Yeah, you're going to be way out of the game.
All right, now we're just open forum. Does the council need anything? I guess Sharon had her hand up first.
Yeah, me either. Me either, first.
I'm sorry.
Me either, first.
Sure, yeah, that's what I said. Go ahead.
We've discussed this, and I want to make sure this is on record. I am the closest person to this boat launch. I am going to be the one affected the most. We talked about eminent domain, correct?
Yes, Sharon talked to me today, and I'm putting that subject up. She was concerned that eminent, eminent domain would be used to secure some of her property for this. I absolutely would oppose that.
I just want it on record.
I would, I would absolutely oppose that.
Okay. Here's the other thing.
And therefore, there will be none.
I moved a lot of my stuff around because I'm the one in front, okay? And I know nobody really understands this, but I bought this seven years ago. And I restored this old historical building from top to bottom. And right now, just two nights ago, people park right in front of my building, in front of my picture window, overnight. I called the sheriff, and they're saying we need signage. There's not been any signage for any park. We have Seven Oaks Park right now. There hasn't been anything since 1983. We need signage that says that they cannot park their boats, their trailers, their vehicles right across park from my home. I bought this place for the beach, and we need signage.
For a second, I think on that issue of signage, that was in the thing we just approved, that signage was being part of that.
Okay, we didn't hear that, and you know what? I appreciate.
So that issue's been?
I do appreciate hearing that. You know, sometimes, okay, I have traumatic brain injuries, so sometimes I don't always hear everything.
Well, that's why you interrupted.
But here's the other thing.
That's already been addressed.
But we've talked, and I want this on record. I opened up my area so that I can have some of those little buoys that you have at the park in front of my place to keep people from parking in there. And I really want my view. I'm, you know, I'm selling my place probably, and I just don't, I don't think it's fair that last night, last night, Kevin? Saturday night, people parked overnight right in front of my place. And I have to call the sheriff's department, and oh, yes, they do come and respond. People park there, you can see they're doing drugs. I have knockers. I've been a fraud investigator for 20 years before I came here. And I just don't think it's right if right in front of my property, and you know how obnoxious people are. They will park right in front of my property with their trailers, their boats, their trucks. And when you try to say something to them, they disrespect you. So I have to call the sheriff to come. And I shouldn't have to do that to what I would like, and I would then, we've talked about this.
We got the point, and I said, we already put that in the recommendation that we just
But are we going to put the buoys all the way around where I have now opened up?
Whatever, whatever the signage, they'll put some signage on the...
No, but in front of my property. I want something to block people from backing up.
Sharon, can I, no, go to work. I understand you want signage. We approved it.
Not signage, I want blockage from people backing into my yard.
Yeah.
This is my front yard.
Okay. Who marked that down?
That needs to go on record. And my other problem is this. It took me a while to come to this decision. But you guys said you were going to put docks that were going to be 20 foot. You put 32 in front of the Bruggmans, okay? They have small children. I have children, right? We need to make sure if you say it's going to be a 20-foot dock, it can't be 32. We need to make sure that we are keeping people safe.
We sent people down there, Sharon, to talk to the Bruggmans when we installed the dock. Ms. Leimeyer, Wilbur went down there. The docks are 20 feet, there's no dock longer than 20 feet. There is a ramp associated with the dock to get up as it floats. So that's why you have, and I don't know if it's 32 feet, or 24 feet, or 28 feet.
It's 32, and it was promised to be 20.
The dock is 20. The reason for the 12... The reason for the 12-foot ramp is safety reasons because of the water. When originally, I was going to put this in an eight or a 10-foot ramp. The drop elevation of the water, an eight-foot ramp would be just like this, and nobody can get up and down. Can't carry cruiser tanks, or your golf, or coolers, or anything. So then I went out to 10 feet, and we checked it again. Wait, John was there who checked it down. So I switched it to 12 feet for safety reasons. It's a safe angle for people to get on and off the boat. That's the only reason. That dock is 20-foot long, and the ramp is 12. And that's strictly for safety rules for people.
But can I just tell you that there are a lot of obnoxious people that don't care? And they make that way, and he's got two twin daughters, or grandchildren.
Sharon, you're obsessed with them, okay?
Okay, that's fine, but on my point, I have children who know, have lived here forever, and they're going out there on their waterboards. And these boats are coming, and they're making the wave, and I can't, my children can't enjoy the front of my property either, okay? So what I'm asking, I just want it on record, I'm not going to say another thing. What I'm going to ask is that, please, make sure there's enough signage, because I talked to the sheriff two nights ago, and he said there's been no new signage since 1983, and we need new signage that says there will be no parking in front of my area, right? There will be no overnight parking, please. Can we just... I bought this place seven years ago. This was never even anticipated.
Sharon, I don't know what to tell you. You said the same thing.
And I'm just asking, it's just on record, right? It's just on record.
We recommend, the recommendation that we just passed that signage would be incorporated into the design. So it's going to be incorporated, okay?
And you're going to put those little buoys in front of my house.
And you also wanted some bollards, that's what they call them, posts on the corner when they back around, so they didn't back near property. I think that was discussed at the zoning meeting, too.
Well, we did discuss it, but you and I also had a discussion that we would discuss this now, so that it would be on record. Because if this continues to happen, and I have to keep calling the sheriff, they told me, Karen told me, he needs signage. And I need those buoys, and I need them as soon as possible.
We got the message.
Okay.
We want signage, it's in the recommendation, and we'll see what, you know, what signage you're going to recommend, that's why we have a meeting.
Yeah.
First off, I think we glossed over Jen's report a little bit. I mean, I think she should be applied, and Rayner should be applied, because if you look at COVID, and you go back, she might compensate the numbers again. 2019 was $3,000 profit.
For 2019, yeah.
2019 is pre-COVID, right?
Yeah.
So what was it, 3,000?
3,000 different.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and so, post-COVID, which we're at today, do you think that we barely need any close to those pre-COVID numbers? What's the numbers today, this past month?
We had a net profit of 8,100.
So that's 5,000?
No, 3,000. 2019, we had 5,000.
$5,000 increase from 2019?
3,000.
Okay, 3,000.
Yes.
But I think she should be applied, that's very amazing. I would also say the supporters of the union and the promotions and stuff are all good. My second point, the Dan's comment, you know, since all the disruption going on in Rayner Town Center, it's, you know, we've had to take lapses in rights and stop and go around. And what occurred to me is just what Dan said, we had this prior, but if you come around from Corina to Grill, you go around, you've got road blockers, and then money is there, you have to go two miles an hour if you don't want to hurt somebody. So really look at that corner, get somebody to trim the trees there.
Do you know who trimmed down the main tree, the pleasure, at my place?
Well, hold on, let me finish. You have your time to talk.
Sharon, Sharon.
Sharon, time to talk.
Excuse me, let's not interrupt anybody else.
And I finished, that's a safety issue, and it was mentioned to slow down, slow down. It is becoming more apparent. And then as you go around showing the place, I know that the alleyway behind Cantilever, the DNR lot, Phil's, or that's Rayner alleyway, right?
And that's what we have.
Hold on, hold on.
Sharon, Sharon.
I have a right to say it. It's a letter.
But not even, not even, maybe the other person.
You want to make this pristine, but you're not making it pristine. There's a, I come from law state, you know, I'm very nice and jungle.
We listened to you, we've got a list of mission.
Well, we'll talk about next week then.
Jeff, continue.
And so that alleyway is Rayner alley, correct?
Which one you talked about?
Between Phil and DNR and Cantilever.
Yes.
So that's the alley that was opposed years and years ago for Rayner, right?
Yes.
I was just with what's going on. It should be used more. I think there's been curb cuts, you don't have to do the thing, and...
Ain't going to happen.
Really?
Yes, so the DNR and the county, not DNR, I mean, the CN opposes, and the FRA, part of the regulations, when they gave us the quiet zone, when they installed the medium, which is 53 feet from the center, from the edge of the track. The regulation is that the curb height would not be changed on the sides or on the mediums in that area. So no curb cut can be made to access that alleyway.
Okay, there's clearly a curb cut for CN to get onto their road.
Yeah, the only access to the CN has is to get onto their road. But obviously, I see they cut through there to that alleyway.
It would be nice to be able to use their curb cut and make that alley.
It would be nice, but I spent this whole week, and prior to that job, starting trying to get what they call a drive-through curb at that spot, and it's been denied. And I haven't, as late as today, I have managed to get some of the curb farther to the north cut, so that we can get up there and have some light prop parking that was not available till today. And they've agreed to that, so it's a...
That is probably valuable.
So that's something that we're going to, another thing that we're going to look at in the future. But with the railroad, again, with that railroad expansion, there's going to be all kinds of changes in that railroad corridor, so we'll have our chance to address that.
Just one more.
I think, John, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I...
Go ahead, you want to approach it.
Sorry about the docks, you know.
Go ahead.
I feel like I've been a victim of the baby switch, because you said that there are two sizes of dock available. Do you guys stay over 20?
20, 20, and we're getting a 20, two 20s, and a 16.
So they've been reduced in size?
Yes, we've had to reduce one in size because the side that faces the bridge, we've got a 20-foot there, if you take and go down and put another 20-foot there, it runs in too close to the shoreline, so a boat can't make it around because the depth of the water is only about 10 feet. So that creates one side of that dock that's not parkable. So what we did is shorten it, and the boat, there's more water that they can come in.
I remember under original proposal, we were the 20, two 20s and 24, but now there's two 20s and a 16.
Was going to put the 24 on their side, I decided to move the 20-foot there, and we cut the 24-foot one down to 16, and put it in closer to the shoreline, so boats can use it.
I, you know, I've got kids swimming there at that beach.
That dock should protect it for your kids. There should be no waves coming in there, that dock is going to...
No, the boats come in there, and they swing around, and our ball, geez, they come right in there, and something's happening, you know, they're tapping.
The babysitter at the dock, is that what we mean? Excuse me. You're kind, Cheryl, and you came here. Excuse me. Excuse me, John, that's fine. One time, can you say I'm a red dog?
Then our property, the city property goes 24 feet, the dock goes 32 feet, so there are 12 feet that are 10 feet, or whatever it is, that are right in front of our...
You don't own the water.
We have a law, we're very right. But you don't own rice, you don't own this lot. There's safety, safety trunks, the DNR. And where does, where do the children find safety? Call up Grand Rapids, call up St. Paul, whatever you want to call.
I'm not calling anybody. All right, all right, listen, listen.
That is unacceptable to have that dock there. It is just awfully unacceptable. Or on the other side, where the figures were, that's plenty of space over there.
Are there fish in the bed? I might go fishing out there tomorrow, just, just...
Excuse me. Folks, folks, listen, we got to maintain order here. We can't get by everybody talking at the same time. I think we've been giving everybody a chance. I think we can just be respectful, listen to what they're saying, and I'll give you a chance to reply. Obviously, you have an issue with the length of the dock and the ramp, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and you...
The city property goes up to 24 feet.
Sue, that's fine, let me ask a question here.
And the dock goes 32.
That was the question, Sue, where's your, where's your property line at?
I can't hear you. Where is our property line? I told you, where the property line is, is where the cement, cement, yeah, it's right there. There's a, we had our property survey, there's a survey that right there, that's from the dock, the public dock, to that spot, 24 feet.
Okay.
This particular dock is all 30, so it's right in front of our property.
You're saying the property line depend on what may hold in property.
It's roof, it's unnameable.
Shh, one at a time, okay? I want to get here with...
You get out here, you turn the dock around, let us know.
John, I'm trying to monitor your idiotic conversations when you've got five people talking, and I can't make sense, and nobody else can. I'm giving you a chance to ask the question. You can be respectful, so you can get the answer. It might not be the answer you want, but you can get an answer. Sue, you were saying something, what is it?
The dock, John okayed a 20-foot dock, which would have been right front, would have been part of the city property. Instead, rid this...
Ramp.
Ramp, and the 20-foot dock. Ramp and the 20 foot dock, that ends up being 32 feet. So then what ends up happening is that we have 12 feet or 8 feet that's in front of our property and the boards.
I got, I got, I got the picture now. Now the next question is, how far out is the dock to shore?
Not very far.
Wilbur, Jen, did you go down there or no?
Yeah, I went down there, I've been there quite a bit. I mean, I did push for a lot of the, the docks that we were going to plan, I wanted them on the north side because I kind of thought this might.
How, can you tell me how far the dock, I'm going, the reason why, I'm going to check with the DNR on the riparian rights and there may be, obviously, the distance that your property line extends out for riparian rights, is it 10 feet, is it 30 feet, is it 500 feet? I don't know that answer because obviously if that dock is over the riparian, over your line, then your riparian rights have been imposed on. But obviously they would have to be, you know, there has to be a distance from shore where they exist and don't exist. So if it's beyond the, that distance, then you'd have a legitimate.
Okay, that's the law, all neighborliness.
John, I'm just trying to find out what, what the law is for neighborliness is.
Yeah, just come down and go get it. And you can see that our dock goes out like this and that dock.
Sue, I drove by, I see the situation.
And a boat has to drive between our dock and that dock to turn around and probably come right down.
I understand the situation, Sue. What I think we have to do is find out, and I, and again, I don't know this answer, whether they take it from the high watermark, from the low watermark, where the riparian rights end or start, you know what I mean? End or start, whether they're into riparian rights or aren't, and where your property line is and what angle it goes at. So there's, I totally believe you on this, but these are the questions I'm going to ask the DNR and I'll try to do it tomorrow.
Right, the law is all, neighborliness is neighborliness. Would you like to have somebody come and get that out? No, absolutely not, no way. And, but because you guys don't look into things.
Mary, John, John, excuse me. I sat here at the last meeting, asked Jen, Wilbur, and you, you go and look at, so don't, don't sit there and say we don't look into things. I specifically asked them to do that. Now you come back and say it's over your line and it's infringing on your riparian rights. I understand your question, so I'm going to look into that, but don't say we don't check this out.
Let me ask, nobody said anything about how long those docks were going to be. They said 20 or 22, not that extra 16 or whatever it is, the ramp, I'll include this.
All right, thank you.
If it's infringing on their riparian rights, whatever it is, we will take the 20 foot dock out of their side, put it on the grid side, take the new 16 foot one we're getting and we'll stick it on.
As long as the 16, as long as the 16 don't infringe on the riparian rights, we can do that. So that's why I want to check that.
16 and 12 is what, 28?
Yes.
And our property, the city property ends at 24. So obviously that's still.
Sue, Sue, that's what I'm going to check, where the riparian rights are. I respect your property lines, you know, whether they can, you know, at an angle, when that dock is out here, if this is 24 feet and it's going at that angle, at that angle, that 24 feet may be 10 feet over, it may be 10 feet short. It's just a simple matter of talking to the DNR, having them look at it and knowing where your property line is and how it lines up. And John, you're right.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Okay, well, Sue, tell them what I'm saying then. But all right, okay, is there?
But I just ask another couple of questions.
All right, we've covered this, we'll, we'll check that out.
When it came down to these floating docks, I can never recall, this was after discussing the meeting, until the meeting of April 13th, at which time it was brought out that Wilbur was going to be giving votes for the floating dock. So being that I'm an obsessive compulsive type, I looked for all the eight minutes of 2021, 2020, 2019 and found nothing in there about floating docks at any of the council or committee meetings. However, in 2018, it was discussed and at that time, Wilbur was going to be giving votes, first they see it was, and second they met Wilbur's. And the decision made in 2018 was that it would be placed on the budget for 2019. So in addition to that, my second comment is, what is this budgeted for for 2021?
You know, I guess I can't answer any of those questions other than the fact that we made a decision here that we thought floating docks would be a, a good, a good thing for the. Well, at the council meeting, we voted on it and approved.
I know, you got up on stuff on.
Well, thank you for the information.
But prior to that time, no, that's.
There's another question back here.
You are misleading people. You never discussed it before that time. It's probable that you and, and Wilbur sat and discussed and getting votes, but it's not about our property. We are the people, that's just Rayner, we deserve.
I guess you can compose anything you want. There was another question back, Dan, behind you, another gentleman had a question.
Yes, thank you, regarding the roll around market, is there a sound for that, not the party council, no, it's not that.
The budget?
Yes.
The budget right now, we have $200,000 LCMR, we have approximately $100,000 that can be used on that street, whatever the street is.
300 grand?
300 grand and some extra money we have.
And this is finally the group permit, or we want all of the additional permit, it goes back to engineers, they will then send out the price sheet, bids, vote on that project and maybe.
Yes.
And that probably comes back to you guys.
That's correct.
Uh, let's say, at some, at some point, it's assumed it's going to exceed that budget, what do you do with that money?
If we exceed the budget?
If you have a plan, if you're going to exceed what you guys have planned.
There's, well, the only thing I've seen is the length of the sidewalks and there's a few minor things that could be adjusted.
Try cutback.
Cutbacks, there could be, but, you know, I don't anticipate this. Prior to having any of these meetings, I did some solicitation with, uh, block top, excavation, concrete items, even the floating dock, the concrete, everything it took to do the project, every major item. And we were under, we were under $200,000. But since then, since then, we decided we're going to put that additional parking across from, you know, the old bank and stuff like that. Again, that's a different funding agency or a different funding source that we do have money for. And so that changes the price of the project a little bit. And then the amount of the sidewalk that was added, that's changed, it's been extended all the way down to the dock. Again, you know, that stuff goes for, you know, six bucks a square foot or something, so depending on how many. So there are some, some things we can do for it. I personally don't think it's going to exceed the budget. I go on this county project, I was spot on in that, we saved eight and a half percent under the budget. So, you know, I, I kind of know the construction costs.
That is a curve banker, because I was interacting with Wilbur in here because you guys have this street of living with the earnings and not exceeding and having.
Yep, done a great job of it.
So I hope, because it seems like a lot of time and energy, a lot of these people are worried this project, that the cost for exceed it, it's completely acceptable.
Well, I think most of council has been on there, God, how many years, Wilbur's been on here, Joanne, Jennifer just got here. But since I've been mayor, we have not exceeded our budget once. And so that's been, you know, maybe a few years too long for some of you, but I can tell you, we, we held within the budget, we've increased everything. So I, I think, speaking for the citizens, I think you guys are in really good hands when it comes to financial stability.
All right, I'll continue with this.
And we intend to do that. We're pretty cautious on how we spend our money.
But I heard.
Go ahead.
I heard you saying that there's different funding for the Loop Street.
Different funds available.
What are the different funds?
We have a.
Sharon, what's the amount, about $100,000 that we can spend in the Loop Street?
Sue, when, when the.
Is that the Loop Street?
Issue for the County Road 130 project?
465,000.
Right.
There was a street reconstruction plan where there were three streets included. The Loop Street was included, County Road 21 was included and County Road 130. And all the monies have not been, weren't spent on the project because it got redesigned. So there's some money left over that can still be spent on doing some improvements to the Loop.
Wouldn't it have been better if they actually didn't have such a big bond?
There's some limitations on how you can do that, just like there's limitations on what you can do with it. We can keep it to make payments on that bond, we can use it on these streets, that's exactly why we bonded for that much, in case improvements were needed or that project underrun. So the thought process is correct. You know, I've got to give you a little history, it was like a 465,000 project originally. We had an issue with our contractor there on a rock discrepancy, so we took the, we took the initiative and changed the designs to the open ditch, what we have, which I think we have a beautiful road over there, and we saved over $100,000, which we again have purpose for and we have the ability to use. And now that's why we designed that additional parking across from the old bank and the sidewalk into that, because there are funds available. That way we can make some civic improvements whether, and we have funds to pay for that.
Is that something in the community plan so that residents have a chance to look and see what that plan for those priorities, street wise and bigger matters, budget wise and certain, is that in the community plan?
The community plan that's, that has been addressed is on the website. It was developed prior to the annexation and it's a real general plan that talks about just sort of general things that the city wants in the future.
That's ours, we have a special.
I, I believe it was, right, I think it was part of that whole process.
Dan, you had your hand up, is there, do you have another question?
Me?
Yeah, you have your hand up.
I, yeah, I'd like to change this, I think here for the north side of the tracks there. We have a, quite an area over there where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, people blocking here and there, not with air, without a vehicle, and so bike traffic, a lot of bike over there. And just like a throw the idea out there for the council to consider, maybe like they have in the malls, these pedestrian signs that say you must stop for pedestrians at the crosswalk, that particularly at the corner there, the new corner that's being developed there to get people to at least slow down and maybe to have people use the crosswalk whenever they can, possibly even reduce the speed a little bit.
You know, Dan, I think I discussed this with you and I forgot to bring this up. I think that's a good idea. I, I think we'll talk to the county about reducing the speed limit as you get over the track to, to the end of where that construction is, 46. We could ask the county to reduce the speed down to 50 miles an hour because.
I think it should start right at the park.
Yeah.
Well, and that's fine, we can, we can, we can call that. Again, it's the county road and they set the speed limits, but they are, you know, they listen to our wishes and it only makes sense because there is a lot of pedestrian traffic there and there's no reason that you should be going 30 miles an hour when you go over the railroad tracks when you got a 90 degree corner or you're going to be stopping at Looney, you know, just a half a block ahead. So there's no reason for that speed limit to be that way. So I think, I, I think we have a very good chance of doing something like that. Is that still.
I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot of distracted drivers down there.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of people through down the道 there on their four wheeler, side by side. Like I said, a lot of pedestrian and bike traffic.
I'd like to throw someone else up there with this, do you think there's a need for the stop signs there?
Yes.
That's what I was saying, it's a four corner stop. I mean, that's what we have now, that's what, that was the question, you know.
If they reduce the speed, maybe the stop signs could.
They'll.
They could go away.
Well, I.
And they must turn that corner at 15 miles an hour.
I'll, I'll, I meet with the county engineer basically every day on the inside, so I'll, I'll bring up that issue of reduce speeds. And, you know, I know Todd, I think you've talked, you know, and we've talked about that. We really have to park here, I'll, I'll look to see maybe how far we can adjust that. So we can see, so I'll bring that, that up with him. Like I said, I see him visually every day. Sharon?
Yes, I would just like to say, I would like everyone in this council to think right now where you live and how this affects you directly, okay? I do care about businesses around here, whether I like them or not. I have had, what, in the last two days, 10 people stop by my place and ask me how to get to the DNR lever and ask me how to get to the other side. And I tried to tell them and they said that's just too hard, we're going to go somewhere, okay? But when I asked you, we bought our places because we wanted to look for a place, we wanted to feature. None of you live close, all of Todd, you live close to the park and you don't have that perception of anyone who had input something there to their end. Right? I don't know where, I don't know where staff, I know where it is. I don't know where staff, we have anybody else, so next week, because I'm on you, you have to for next week. But here's the thing, something, I, we bought our places so we can have, I see orders in front of my home all the time.
Sharon, I don't know what I have to tell you. We, we made the recommendation, we're going to look at the plans, signage, about your parking and turning in there, we're going to address that, we haven't seen that.
You know that, it's not just me I'm talking about, it's the community. If Todd has something put in front of his place or his brand, his kid or, or his brand or baby to get her, he can have something more to say here. So next week, I'll be back. Then I'm just going to say, be there.
Thank you.
Anybody have one more question?
Yes, sir.
Since your plan is to meet with the DNR about riparian rights, John and I would like to meet there also.
I'll see if I can get him to come over. I'm going to meet with one, see if I.
No, 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 we want to meet there, we don't want to meet at the DNR. We don't want to hear this.
Hello? Hello? Sue, I just said, I'll see if I can get him to come over there and meet with you.
Perfect.
Hello? We.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, thank you.